There are two separate bids. One and one.
Meeting to order, start with the pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Starting off with citizen concerns. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval agenda, I'll move that. Motion by Radic, second by Taylor, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, anyone opposed, passes four to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items three through eight constitute consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three, approval of the minutes, the August sixth, 2019 meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five, from human resources, A, approval memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate hiring process. C, presentation of award certificate to Brian Merron. Who will get his certificate? Six, from board administration, A, approval of resolutions for tax suspension for BT. B, approval of resolution for tax suspension for DL. Item seven, from the county sheriff, approval of 2019 interlocal agreement between City of Sioux City, Iowa, and Woodbury County, Iowa, for the local Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grants Program Award. And item eight, from secondary roads, A, is approval of permit to work in right of way for long lines, and B, approval of permit to work in right of way for Todd Rand. Any questions on the consent agenda? Alright, I will second that, motion by DeWitt, second by Radic, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, alright, that ends the consent agenda. We are a little early for that set time for Kenny. Alright, so moving on to item ten, juvenile detention. Approval of 2019-2020 food service contract with Summit Managed Food Service. Legal... We're waiting on additional review, right?
Yeah, I reviewed it. Didn't have any changes to the contract itself. I think they were gonna follow up as far as what did you wait? What effect? Wait to find out on that.
It started the first or was supposed to start the first of July. I haven't talked to Shane since then. But I'm gonna see what I can work out with him, since we're just now approving the contract. Last year, we had thirty-one days he gave us. At the old rate.
Why was that given?
Because the contract was late getting processed, so he gave us the thirty-one days.
Okay.
And then they back billed for the other rate increases as applicable.
Would that put us about thirteen days, I mean if we're at August thirteenth, are you saying thirty-one days from July first?
Our menus have been in effect, the menus are there. They've been what we've been using, the new menus, we just don't have the contract.
So does that sound, what would you recommend, Joshua, does it sound reasonable to say twelve days is in, or just to say we're approving it as a board from here on out and hope that the twelve or thirteen days is in?
Well, yeah, my recommendation would just be to approve the new contract, the effective date of today. And then we can work out what should be paid for the time between July first and today. I didn't realize you weren't gonna reach out to them prior to tonight's meeting. Probably would've been helpful to have that information as far as what, what their view of things is. But I, based on the information we have, I think we should just approve, starting today, the new contract.
I'll go ahead and move it. Motion by Radic, second by Taylor, any other questions or discussion?
So that will be changed to today's date on the it's written in as July one. So that'll be changed.
On us, is the same motion as of today?
Right. That would work.
Did I move it or did you move it?
I thought you-
Mr. Radic did.
I moved it, okay, well then I will change my motion as of today.
Okay.
Alright, so motion by Radic, second by Taylor. I did say that earlier, but yeah. Any other questions? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to secondary roads. Eleven A. Receiving considered bids for some salts, some calcium chloride for FY 2020.
Good afternoon, I have a bit of jobs here, so.
We received two bids for Clyde. First from Jericho Services of Indianola, Iowa. Jericho bids, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars per ton. Total, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. So four thirty-nine, and then fifty-seven, nine forty-eight. Second is from Bomb Cars.
They bid four hundred and eighty dollars per ton, for a total of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. I recommend award of the quotes, oh, first we have to receive.
I'll move to receive. Motion by Radic, second by Taylor, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I recommend award of the quotes to Jericho Services of Indianola, Iowa.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by Radic, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Moving on to eleven B, receiving considered bids for propane for heating county buildings for FY 2020.
We have an unmarked bid.
Mystery bid?
Just a blank envelope.
Alright.
With a stamp, amazing how you got to us. This one is from Cedar Valley Egg Co-op. Seventy-eight cents per gallon. As the board might remember, we take bids on behalf of the Red Department Conservation, Emergency Operations, Treasurer and Sheriff's Departments.
Does that have the running total then, the fifty-two thousand, or fifty thousand, two hundred times that?
Yeah, they, this one didn't require it be carried out, so. Seventy-eight cents per gallon, the next bid is from also not shown. Johnson Propane, ninety-eight cents per gallon. And finally, from New Cooperative Incorporated of Fort Dodge, Iowa. I think they do-
Is that out of Hornet?
Hornet. And they bid eighty cents per gallon. Request the board to receive the bids.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Radic, second by DeWitt, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
I recommend board award quotes to Central Valley Egg Co-op.
I will move that recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Radic, second by DeWitt, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, passes four to zero. And we are still moving right along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, item twelve, from the county auditor's office, approve the use of seventy-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars, fifty-five cents from CIP funds to purchase voting booths and modems for election night returns.
Now this item is for you, as a result of our meeting with Kenny and Dennis and Michelle, we talked with Ryan and how to proceed as far as when we were putting, using, use of CIP funds. Previously, we had five hundred thousand dollars that was designated for voting equipment, we spent about three hundred and seventy-five thousand for the new voting equipment. We had planned on using the balance to buy electronic poll books, but they weren't ready for us to go to bid because there was, the voter registration commission was considering some changes of vendor we're trying to put in place, which would've been advantageous to us. They are working on that, in fact, I think they do have that done, but we're not planning to bring that before you until next year, before the general election. So this year, we're using that only seventy-three thousand, and that's for the to dedicate the CIP funds for thirty-four thousand for booths, and then for, the balance of that money goes towards modems, to modem in the results, we talked about that earlier. One of the changes in the results was that we didn't have in the original one that we brought before you. We didn't have the, the cost of the modems themselves, we were talking about the servers, and plus there's an additional workstation that is included in that funds, so we now are pretty sure that we have everything before you in order to use.
Are these booths kinda more of the same of what we've got, or are they kinda upgraded from?
No, they're, actually, they're very simple compared to what we have now. The old ones are pretty beat up at this point, and they're very difficult for the precinct election officials to put together. The ones that we are purchasing now, we're getting rid of all the old ones and putting these together. And they're very simple to put together, there's not much to them, but it is what the cost is to put them there.
Cause, how many are you buying at the thirty-six thousand? That thirty-six of them, or is that-
No, forty-four precincts and probably five or six per precinct.
Oh, okay, so it's quite, quite a significant amount of them, so.
Yes.
And by understanding you're gonna go through at some point, you said with the poll books-
Right.
How, do you know how much that is approximately?
Yeah, somewhere anywhere from, a hundred and twenty-five thousand up to two hundred thousand, depending on all the bells and whistles that I'm able to convince you folks to support us getting.
So we'll probably exceed the five hundred at some point.
Yeah, at some point, yeah.
And then HVAC part one?
Alright, oh, we can interrupt, we're gonna go back to our four forty-five set time. Item nine on the agenda. From Building Services, public hearing on Trosper Hoyt Juvenile Detention Kitchen Project.
Kenny Schmitz, Woodbury County Building Services. This item is to conduct the hearing for the Trosper Hoyt Juvenile Detention Kitchen Project and request any comments from interested or concerned parties on specifications, drawings, contract, or cost of the improvements.
Seeing all interested parties, see what we got.
I'll move to close the public hearing unless there's public comment.
Second.
Alright, so motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Alright, so that brings us straight back to where we were in our discussion.
Are we are we just holding the hearing?
Wasn't it just a hearing, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we do that on the other topic?
Yeah, back to item twelve.
So my own question, HVAC part one on the CIP, what was that, did it make any for, do you know off the top of your head? Cause if we're taking the thirty-four thousand from that, I just wonder.
It would've been leftover CIP- Can you step up there, sorry?
It would've been leftover CIP funds from the HVAC controls project.
So nobody is the lesser?
So no one's the lesser.
Thank you. So unless there's other discussion, we'll approve the use of seventy-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-five cents for CIP funds to purchase voting booths and modems for election night.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by Young. So was this allocated before, or just moving allocation?
You're just committing those funds, you're approving the funds now, that's part of what we talked about, the process with Kenny's office and them, is to make sure that we're keeping track of those funds.
Yeah, we're committing and reallocating a portion of the funds.
Wasn't initially about five hundred thousand though allocated for voting booths, right?
Yes, and we aren't using-
We did three seventy-nine, then we did, what was it, twenty-nine for modems?
Well, the seventy-three thousand is in addition to the three seventy-nine.
Yeah.
So we're at about four, forty-eight percent.
Right.
So we're still under, someone back-
Didn't we have those modems or something the last time, or?
Pardon?
Didn't we add those modems or something last?
This is just a continuation of the same thing.
Of that, oh, okay, alright.
It, we needed it clarified, and we gotta clarify now.
Alright. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, passes four to zero, item thirteen, from the board here, approval of Sioux City Symphony use of the courthouse rotunda.
Hey, Mr. Chair, so the Sioux City Symphony would like to hold their yearly gala at the courthouse, and on Saturday, October twenty, or April twenty-fifth, excuse me. They held their event year last on April sixth, in conjunction with Aggie's liquor license and folks cleanup with responsibility. I'm understanding that that went fairly well, as far as any expectations, and so Sheriff's Office built the symphony for providing security at the event. And so I would ask for approval to allow them to hold their yearly gala on Saturday, April twenty-fifth. And try to lay out some standardized expectations, I think for any group or event.
Anything pertaining to leftover chips?
I think there's definitely enough for the chair.
There's some leftovers, but not what you'd want. Jeremy did mention this, and he asked if, if there was any problems with it, or anything that had arisen in the past. And since we've had some requests before about courthouse use, I thought it would be a good idea to put, put something together for interested parties that make these requests. Kind of a guide that, that can show them what we expect as part of an event. And I don't know if Jeremy, you've got a chance to share that with the group at all or not, but it's just items related to how the what would be allowed, in other words, if they wanted liquor and things like that, who would carry the license? How cleanup would be handled, and, and items like that, just to just to clear up a lot of the questions, and it asks who contact, who contact people are and their information and numbers, just to make things run a little smoother for future events.
Do you mind forwarding that on to the everybody, just informational?
Sure.
Could it actually also be in the procedure book by the, held by the board office? So-
I mean, it could be, if you'd like that, yes, absolutely.
Are there any differences in this event compared to their last event?
I think it's pretty much the same event as far as I understand it.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by Young, second by Radic. Any other questions, discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
Nay.
Alright, that passes three to one. Item fourteen, from the board, approval of letter of support for the designation of proposed US Bicycle Route Fifty-Five, USBR Fifty-Five, through Woodbury County. So this was something we were asked to do by a bicycle group that is trying to create a route that goes through Woodbury County. And I thought it would be a good idea to write a letter, support the DOT on that. So that's why I threw it on the agenda, to get the approval from the board to send said letter. And Mark, I know you were on the email there too, and if you want to you, you don't have to say anything if you don't want to, but you did express your opinion in the email, and-
The group behind this trail had requested some county consultation on the on the route selected. Initially, they selected Port Neal Road. Coming out of Sergeant Bluff, coming around into Salix, past Browns Lake and those areas. Parts of that are scenic ride, but we've also spent several million dollars developing Two Hundred and Sixtieth Street and Port Neal Road as heavy truck routes. The CF Industries plant alone is generating forty-five thousand trucks per year since the new urea plant went into place. That's not really the most conducive place to have a bikeway. They did move it over to Highway Seventy-Five, which is still up to three thousand vehicles a day in some stretches. I would've preferred to have seen them cut over on Two Fiftieth or Two Eightieth and come down through Hornet. Take over, they, they would like to be a little closer to the river, they would like to be closer to the parks along there, but we do have some fairly high traffic levels on the selected routes. That was my concern. It's not that this proposed, they're dubbing it the Lewis and Clark Bicycle Route, that they're looking to do. It is a bad thing, I'd just like to see it cut a little longer, a little closer to the bluffs, and it's something I'm still continuing to contact the group and work with them on.
Is there any impact to landowners or farming operators, or anything that we're missing by signing this letter of support? Does it obligate one route over another?
You're, you're signing support for a route. You know, I think, I'm hoping there's still a shot at maybe, at maybe moving that route a bit, yeah. Part of the concern with Highway Seventy-Five is also its very narrow shoulders. The advantage to it is that sight distance out there is, is very good. But that can also lead to drivers becoming complacent and distracted, and-
Well, that is the route where on Regbri, the one year, the person did get hit from behind on a bike.
That was before I got here, so I wasn't aware of that.
I, I just knew, cause I sold the guy furniture, but-
Okay.
But other than your concerns about the-
I, I see no impacts to property owners or anything. The, the only impact to the county will be the cost of installing the signs, plus maintaining them as time goes by. There is a potential tourism benefit. Again, I had hoped that they would move the route over farther, you know, either Two Hundred and Fiftieth Street or Two Hundred and Eightieth Street, and then bringing it into Hornet, instead of trying to keep that route going straight south there along Seventy-Five, I think would be a, a safer route, and, you know, still allow similar scenic views of the Lost Hills. Plus, they have the ability to branch off and, and hit our communities. One thing that this could allow is that, you know, eventually we'd be able to make requests for grants, perhaps for paved shoulders to separate that traffic. The concern is with Old Seventy-Five, acquiring additional right of way with the railroad proximity on the west side of the entire Seventy-Five route is next to impossible, we'd have to shift any route to the east, which causes potential conflicts with utilities. Again, one of the other reasons I wanted to see it shifting over to a couple of the other routes where we don't have utility corridors, traffic, and narrow rights of way to deal with. Those were my concerns with it.
Well, in general, I guess I'd, I'd say we're supportive of the route, it's just, let's work on the, the actual route.
The actual selection of the-
Having a route through Woodbury County is good, let's figure out where-
Where to put it.
Do we decide that, or does the DOT?
The DOT decides, the DOT and their advisory group.
So this isn't set in stone yet?
Where it is, is not set in stone.
Okay.
Coming through Woodbury County is just a request.
Coming through Woodbury County is what they're, I believe they're looking for support on right now, and I would, I will try to keep knocking back the, my concerns with the route. At least I got them off of Port Neal Road, which I think was-
Well, and I imagine, you know, the DOT has a lot of engineers there that are probably gonna share similar concerns as to what yours are.
Yeah, it's my hope that we'll be able to continue to make some inroads in those route selections. I, I think it's, I think it's a laudable goal to get, to get this highway out there, but I think we can provide equally scenic route, branch off to the communities, and get onto a road that's safe.
Well, if some of these go nearby, you know, county parks, it'd be a great opportunity to have somebody camp on their bike route.
Definitely.
I guess if it is gonna be named after Lewis and Clark, it should be as close to the route they biked as well, right?
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'll move it.
I'll second. Motion by Taylor, second by Radic, any other questions? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Alright, moving on to reports on committee meetings, Jeremy. Are-
Did you move that?
It was, you moved it, I seconded, didn't it?
Alright, that's what I had, okay.
Sorry.
I just have a rolling, one thirty, the CDO's evaluation, and working through the balance, transfer from Sioux Rivers to Rolling Hills, anticipating that we made a whole, and there's a healthy balance, but a little bit of it's based on taxation timing, mother and daughter report back after, that's all I have.
Nope. Nothing, alright, Rocky?
No.
Don't believe I had any, I'm just gonna double check my calendar here, I forgot to. Just a Simco planning meeting. Going on to citizen concerns.
Hey, guys.
Aye.
I got two different things here, on June twenty-ninth, Woodbury County Farm Bureau hosted a tractor ride, it was the third annual Egg in the Classroom fundraiser ride. The Woodbury County Sheriff's Department participated in that day- The Woodbury County Sheriff's Department participated in that day. They sent four deputies out. They were with us all day, made sure everybody had fun, everybody was safe. And so would want to thank Sheriff Drew and all the officers that were part of that. They bent over backwards to help us. This is the third year in a row that they've done that. Their public, their, their support throughout the public at all these different events. I know on the balance sheet maybe don't look like they're accomplishing a lot or saving money, but in the rural part of the community, it really means a lot to have you guys out there. So want to really thank you for that. So, second thing is, I know in the paper, you guys are probably already talking about or will, the road counters on the gravel roads. And I know I was reading about, you know, some roads may get shifted down to level Bs. You know, you guys are determining which roads are going to get more rock, et cetera. And I just wanted to bring to you guys' attention that not all roads with counters were created equal through this process. One such road that I'd like to bring to you guys' attention was there was a road counter set on 150th Street between Jewel and Knox Avenue. 150th Street is north of Highway 20, a half mile, runs completely parallel from Mowville to Correctionville. But between Knox and Jewel, there is a three-ton bridge. And the road counter was set up right in front of that three-ton bridge. Well, my, I have a half-ton F-150 that I drive for work every day. It weighs 7,200 pounds. So legally, I can't drive over that bridge with my pickup. Likewise, the vehicle I drove here tonight is just a regular Ford Expedition, no different than like a Chevy Tahoe, and it weighs 6,400 pounds. So legally, I can't drive over that road either. So it will not surprise me that that road counter on that road will be extremely low, if not zero. But to me and the people in our neighborhood that rely on that, part of that road and wish we could use it, that bridge almost serves more as a road closed sign sitting behind that road counter than an actual usable road. And so through you guys' process, you know, and I'm sure Mark can probably, you know, point out some of that, but I'm sure there will be things like that on some roads where the counters may be really low, but we may need to look and say, well, why is that? Because on, on that road, like I said, you know, most vehicles can't legally pass over it, so therefore you're not going to have action on that road. But if there is a road that you may be looking at for a bridge, I would really like to insist on that one. Part of the reason is, is farm equipment and for farmers in that area, the farm equipment either has to move down Highway 20 or on Old Highway 20 because on that stretch of the gravel, there's that three-ton bridge, which doesn't work for any farm equipment. And I'm sure the sheriffs and the state patrol would tell you that they'd much rather have us accessing our fields from a gravel road than on Four Lane 20 or Old 20. And that bridge is really the only hiccup in that whole stretch from Mowville to Correctionville. So that's the only kind of advice I had for you guys. Will be interested to see how the information pays out or pans out from the road counters and that kind of stuff. But just wanted to bring that one little incident to your attention. So, thank you.
Thank you. Todd, were you on the tractor ride?
What's that?
Was Todd on the tractor, Deputy Wick?
No.
No? I did hear about, about you and somebody else out at a dunk tank though, and they really enjoyed your guys' ability to garner more donations.
With that in common?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that, I heard, I heard some pretty interesting support for cameras and stuff that really got people throwing the, the balls at the dunk tank there, so thank you for that. And let's see, any other citizen concerns? Alright, board concerns?
Just to make you aware, we didn't secure the last sponsorship for the annual deal at the chambers. And as concerns, the discussion on mega site, I, I do think in fairness to our board that we have looked and continue to look and continue as liaison to the chamber to look at a more holistic approach, including not only the IJR, but the mega site and water, sewer and the needs of infrastructure holistically and have been doing so for months. It's easier said than done to take a thousand contiguous acres. So I just, I think that that needed to be said. That's all I got.
Well, I mean, I do kind of echo some of his points made in, in the article, but at the same time, it's balancing the resources we have and knowing what we're able to do with what we have. I still think we can pursue land purchases as a county and still take care of the county roads at the same time. So. I have kind of talked with David about another potential area to look at for purchases too, so. Just an FYID, guys. Alright.
Treasurer Clayton expressed that he would, just wanted to know that tax statements may be late, and I did discuss this briefly with Mr. Gill. But our Tyler system seems to have put him uncomfortably behind, whether, how much behind is another issue, but for all of our YouTube viewers out there, your tax statements might be later than...
Might be on time, might be late, might be, no change.
So just passing on the word from our, Mr. One of 99's treasurer.
Do me noted.
What, if anyone would like to pay extra this year, is there...
Most would, I think, yeah.
Well, since Pat promised this was going to be easy. I don't know why he would have promised us all that.
No, unfortunately, I'm going to go back just to tell you that between the cooperation from Dennis Butler and Michelle's lead on this project, it has gone very smoothly. And the taxes might be a little bit later this year than they were last year, but they aren't as late as they have been in prior years. So we're, we're on very, we're on a very good schedule. I'm very happy, very pleased with where we are at in the tax process this year. Dennis?
They've been late. Some years they've been till up to September 1st. You only have 30 days to pay them. So this should be out pretty soon.
It's not like a college thing where it's so many days late, you don't have to pay it, right?
No. Tax statements are actually considered a courtesy to taxpayers. They are responsible.
Actually, I'm sure that they see it that way.
Well, Dennis, do you have an update on that project? I know it's helped you as far as better interface on your financials.
Yes, it's, it's a learning process. We're having a meeting next week with Tyler, representatives on how to do statements, things like that. So it is going to be a benefit. Our auditors are very excited about it and we're excited. See the trial balance sheets I've been doing are about that thick. We'll print them right off the screens. So this is going to be a benefit. First year will be a little, you know, troublesome sometimes, it'll be real easy sometimes, but second year should be good. Then we give more reports out, more details, pretty much whatever you want.
Alright, well, unless anyone else wants to say anything on that, I...
Let's let it go.
Alright, I'm good. Alright, we adjourn.